Now come to order, we begin with the invocation by Councilman Grubbs, and we'll follow with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the many blessings that you shower on us each and every day. We ask for your guidance. We pray that you give us wisdom, knowledge as we do the work of the city. Lord be with our military, our police officer, our firefighters, all those that serve. We ask all this in your son, Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberation and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our regularly scheduled September 9, 2025 meeting. And we'll begin the meeting with the roll call. Katie?
Yes, sir. Mayor Lindhoff?
Here.
Councilman Wade?
Here.
Councilwoman Vogt?
Here.
Councilwoman Barnett Smith?
Here.
Councilman Grubbs, present. Councilman Testor?
Here.
Councilman Myatt?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll begin with approval of amendments. First, we have the council meeting from August 12, 2025.
I make a motion to approve the August 12 minutes.
Second.
Okay, any questions? Changes? Comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have the caucus meeting from September 2, 2025.
I make a motion for approval for September 2 minutes.
I'll second.
Any questions? Comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Before we get to administrative reports, Chief LaFontaine, do you have something to share with us?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm here to share with you the tax rate that the Fire District Board has adopted for the 2025-2026 tax year. Basically, all the rates are staying the same as the previous year, which is
Thank you.
which is at $2.
Does anybody have any questions for Chief?
Keep it up.
Thank you. Good to see you.
You're dismissed. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Next, we'll go to the administrative reports. We'll begin with the city attorney, Mr. Voss. I've spent most of my time assisting Katie on a few projects with the code, trying to update it and some other things. So things seem fairly peaceful out there without anybody screaming and hollering at us. So anybody have questions about me on any specific matters? Okay. And if you guys could tell Katie what we saw.
I guess. No, she's very strict.
Me.
Okay, next, we'll go on to the Public Works Director, Mr. Sarah Hewson.
Good evening. July and August, we're covering both months since I was out of town to get my report in on time. So we were extremely busy doing concrete work on Spring Palace, Eastern. I'm sure I'm forgetting one. We did do some emergency concrete repairs on Powerline Drive near the intersection of Foundation Drive. We had panels that sunk and were a six-inch offset. So we were able to coordinate getting those repairs completed at a pretty quick timeframe.
Chris, could you pull your mic a little bit closer?
Sorry. No vehicles are damaged that we
I think the mic front needs to get
We reported. Oh, here you go. We're currently working on Comanche Drive. We're in 150 feet of that off of Plymouth Lane, and that's in the same boat where we actually received a complaint of a damaged vehicle. Now, we don't know if that was valid or not, but our insurance said if we act on it, then we're free and clear. So we're replacing about 130, 150 feet of street back there. Ripple Creek ADA's are in process. Regula Blacktop's tentatively scheduled to move in next week to start base repairs on Ripple Creek, Creek Knoll, Glen Street, the back half of Eastern and Palace. So hopefully in the next two to three weeks, all the streets will be resurfaced with asphalt, and that project will be completed. We're currently working on crack sealing as well. We crack seal all the concrete work we've done so far. And then we're working in Maintenance Section B, which is basically from Park Avenue all the way up through East Cover Bridge and the Meadowway in Maryland. So next month, we'll hopefully have all that completed as well, followed by curb painting in Lakeville. Projects, the welcome sign up on Dixie Highway is coming along. The caps are supposed to be in this week. I haven't heard when they're going to install them, and then the sign would be the last thing. The electrics have already completed other than hooking up the sign. The community center remodel was completed. We did all the minor details down there, finished that up. We did have to replace the basement HVAC system that quit working. We did our best to keep it working for two weeks while we were waiting on a contractor to come replace it. I don't think any rentals were affected by the system because we were able to keep it going. So on some other projects are Garvey Avenue resurfacing a multi-use path. I'm hoping this will still be completed prior to winter, but we did have to send a letter to KYTC stating that the city would eat the additional cost above the grant. This grant was applied for 2020 construction cost of, well, as you can see, almost doubled in the five-year period for that project. So we're going to have to fund the difference. All the other projects, there's no real big updates. Edward Jerome is part of the senior living apartments up there. They had to replace a bunch of our concrete street, which they started today. So hopefully they'll be finished with that in the next week. Swan and Stallworth, we did review the plans. We did ask that they add a couple more yard drains in the backyards in that area. The original design only had one. I think the water needs to be caught before it gets to the low spot so that you're not getting all the water to the low spot. So those should be updated here soon, and the application for SD1 should be completed and be ready for submission. The Maine and Lydell project that SD1 had planned is back on now, but they're going to include a bunch of sanitary repairs, replacement on Caldwell Drive as well, is my understanding. So they're putting out a new RFP for design. So hopefully that project will be in the works in the next couple of years. Some of our upcoming work will be probably three weeks in the Luke and Brady neighborhood, removing, replacing about 2250, 2300 feet of curb in Gutter, and then Regula Blacktop will be resurfacing, resurfacing that hopefully mid-October once all that work is completed. So I think we're all ready for road construction season to be over, but we've been able to get a lot done this year. Anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Chief Wood?
I might have to raise that up. I don't know if you recall me or not.
Yeah, raise it up a little bit.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Natasha, we'll find a copy of the activity report and investigative report for August 2025. First item of business is personnel. As we anticipated, three of our officers have submitted their paperwork for retirement. Again, it's a blessing for these guys to endure at least 20 years of service, and we appreciate them, and we wish them nothing but the best luck on Chapter Two of their life. In prep for those vacancies, our hiring committee worked diligently. I think we've interviewed about eight people so far. We've got nine in 10 scheduled for Friday morning. So we're working forward and try to fill those vacancies so we have a continuous evolution of support here. Thankfully, we have about eight lateral officers from the North Kentucky region that have a strong interest in coming here to the New Ellsmer Police, and we're very proud of those, of having that reputation. So I feel really, really good about that. First, on the critical incidents, on August 6, 2025, at approximately noon, officers responded to 1714 Apache Drive in reference to an active dispute. When officers arrived, they encountered a nude, highly intoxicated Hispanic male subject that was trying to steal a vehicle. When officers encountered this person, he was extremely intoxicated, belligerent, tried to fight the officers, and he had a large laceration to his foot. He was so intoxicated that he had stepped on an eight-inch, an eight-inch piece of glass that had gone through the bottom of his foot, through his ankle, and had literally a half an inch sticking out. In the course of those efforts, we were able to control him safely, deter biohazards as a result of the bleeding, and take him to the hospital to seek care. And then we end up charging him with disorderly conduct, AI, and a series of other charges. On August 19, at approximately 1100 hours, the Ellsmer Police received an anonymous tip, a credible tip, in regard to a wanted subject who had actively evaded police in North Kentucky for about three days. This gentleman had significant felony warrants, and due to those severities of those warrants, we worked in coordination with the U.S. Marshals Task Force, acted on those tips, and were able to take that gentleman into custody without effort or incident. On August 25, at approximately 5:00 PM, Officer Winning and K-9 Onyx responded to assist Earlanger Police undercover units with Covington, Florence Police, and the Earlanger Police with an active warrant on a subject that had warrants for attempted murder. The undercover units had done surveillance and observed the suspect vehicle in the lot of Silver Lake Rec Center. Obviously, due to the nature of the severity on the warrant, the charge, and the people inside Silver Lake Rec, they worked a strategic effort, had plainclothes deployed inside. When the gentleman came out, K-9 Onyx and Jesse deployed, and as we were going to apprehend, he surrendered prior to becoming bitten. So he was taken into custody without incident, without a bite. It's a win for us, another bad guy off the streets. On August 25, and at approximately 10:00 PM, Officer Winning and K-9 Onyx responded to assist K-9 officers from the county police who'd been involved in a active pursuit with a motorcycle, where the guy bailed, ran into a wood line, fought the officer, fought the dog. Jesse and his dog responded to assist, were able to take the suspect into custody, render aid to the dog that was injured as a result of the incident. Obviously, Jesse being trained with the dog, he is, has also received additional training for medical treatment for animals as a result of his dog. So Jesse was able to administer medical assistance to the animal, take care of him, assist him, assist the officer, help get the bad guy into custody, things of that nature, and another win for the good guys. On the audit perspective, our police department was audited again by the CGIS audit staff of the Kentucky State Police. I'm happy to report that once again, we received glowing standards, another successful, fully compliant audit, which I'm very proud of. Our department policies, our procedures, anything that relates to federal security standards, handling, protection of CGIS information, again, we excelled those efforts and received another glowing report, which is a pretty daunting task. As it relates to another audit, we did our quarterly audit with the evidence, our storage, our management systems, things of that nature, another successful audit, the way we do business, the way we manage all of our evidence in our storage unit downstairs. Next is miscellaneous. Officer Oscar Sanchez again received the Occupant Protection Award through the state of Kentucky. Every year they do this. They run stats, and Oscar had exceeded those efforts in this region. Oscar's pretty much the standard of what the highway safety measures, stats. Oscar always exceeds those efforts, and once again, he was a recipient of that award. Oscar does a great job. He takes a lot of pride in what he does out here to try to protect our citizens, our community. Community outreach, once again, we participate in the annual Ellsmer Family Reunion. We had a lot of great partnerships. The military was there, our fire department, the police department. Again, I'd like to give a special shout-out to our FOP, Paternal Order of Police. Every year, we donate soft drinks for those efforts to the community. I know they're very appreciative of that, and I'm thankful that we're in a situation where we can donate those drinks to our community every year. And again, that's a joint effort between Earlanger and Ellsmer Police Departments, and I appreciate all their support. Do you have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you, they apprehended the person at the recreational center?
Yes, ma'am.
Did, like, their management need to know that ahead of time?
Yeah, so again, we have plainclothes officers that have worked in coordination with management. It was, it wasn't a five-minute briefing, then we hit, and yet this guy, it was a coordinated effort over a series of multiple hours, because there's a lot of factors involved. One, severity of the, of the charge and what this person's could be capable of doing. We don't know what he has in his car. We don't know what he has on his persons. We had to take a lot of precautions. And again, it's a very coordinated effort between a multi-jurisdictional initiative. You know, there's five different agencies working in conjunction. And again, the dog, he's a special weapon himself, and Jesse does a really good job, and that dog is probably, I'm going to give Jesse a feather in the cap here, but he's probably the best in this region. But yeah, a lot of efforts, a lot of, a lot of coordination.
So they didn't just go into the facility and the manager, what's going on?
No, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff that goes on.
Okay.
So just for everybody's safety.
Okay, thank you.
Was you over there when the two officers got shot? Were we represented there?
No. So I was literally running out of my house with all my gear, and the guys called me and said, hey, we've got about 100 officers here. Can your guys manage the, and assist with the calls? So our guys stood back. Walt Cooley, which retired from Florence, worked in Independence. Walt knows this entire region better than anybody. So he stayed back with Robinson, Steve Robinson, and Steve's worked for an array of different agencies, knows the area very well. So those guys worked the road and took calls with, I believe, Fort Mitchell stayed back. So we stayed back, and they stayed back to work and take all the calls in the, in the tri-county area. Everybody in all three counties were down there. But we stayed back and took care of business here.
The rest of the
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed on the incident descriptions, there's one here that says animal bite attack. Is what animal do you know?
So if it's something like that where it's reflected, it's most cases like a, a dog bite. And that could be, again, without looking back at the call, it's probably a minor incident. How we categorize that? Just because it comes in as a dog bite doesn't necessarily mean it was. A lot of times we get there, it's a, it's a dog that's, you know, was on a leash and scratched somebody, trying to be, you know, try to get some love or try to get pet, some attention. So most cases, it's not like that. And the last thing that I've had, where I remember reviewing, was something very similar to that, a minor incident that was not in fact a dog bite.
It can be a
You'd be surprised what I've seen. Andrew, do you have something? I thought you were going to go somewhere.
I'm good. Appreciate that.
I thought you were going to raise your hand. I thought you
He's counsel for it.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Chief. Next, we'll go on to city clerk, Katie.
Been pretty busy in the office lately as we're wrapping up. Dee has been working with the Residential Rental License Program to get that cleaned up. She just sent out and have done the second late notices. So anybody that's not complying at this point has had not any contact with our office regarding paying their occupational license or renewal of their rental license, which are $25 a unit. They will have liens placed on them moving forward. So if you do have rental property, you need to be contacting us to make sure that that's going out. I got the rest of the old records from the old city voting over here and met with Representative Kentucky Department of Library and Archives on storage destruction of the old records here. There were some that just had not been moved in the processes. They weren't critical to day-to-day stuff, but the Kentucky Department of Library and Archives has pages of what we can keep and the retention schedule for that. So I've been going through those, trying to get those moved over. Been working with KLC on updating the personnel policy, which was last done in 2022. So they're having the, hopefully, final review that we'll be able to bring up to council for changes and updates to it, to follow with best practices and legislation that has changed since it was last updated. As you know, we've been working on property taxes, and the hearing is set for September 16 at 6:00 with a special meeting following with a reading of the tax rate ordinance. Essential notice of that. I have been informed that we have two members that will not be able to make that meeting, so it is critical that the rest of you attend. It should not be a very long night, but if you can't make it, let me know immediately. As Mr. Voss said, we met recently with the codification on our ordinances. They're looking over that and going to make some final edits, and hopefully we'll have that. Joanne, you brought that up. Once they update that, the website will be updated with the new information as well, but that's the link from the last codification. I attended training in Ashland for city clerks to stay up to date on things that are going around the Commonwealth that clerks have up to date, you know, legislative personnel developments. We had training on FEMA and disaster response preparedness, you know, as a result of a lot of the things in the last couple of years. It seems like somewhere in the state is hit with a 100-year disaster pretty regularly in the last several years. So it was kind of nice having that training. Our office helped with the community center grand reopening on August 23. I know that Joanne was there for that day as well, and that was well-attended. And last week, the mayor and the chief presented a proclamation to Emerald Trace recognizing them for a great achievement in becoming agency-free in health care. It's just nice to be able to recognize our community partners from a city standpoint on the great job they're doing in our community, too. And they have become a great partner with Lauren and Therese at the community center, offering to host different interactive events with the seniors. So we hope to continue that partnership for many years. That's it. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move on to the city treasurer report. It should be in your packet. Does anybody have any questions? If not, we'll move on to code and zoning. And once again, there is a, it's in your packet, case report from Josh and Rich. Any questions? Does anybody have any questions about code or whatever? We have a meeting, our monthly meeting is tomorrow. If somebody has anything that they would like to press, they asked her to, okay. Next, we have recreation. We should have a report in there from Brittany. As you can see, she's already started on Christmas. I think we have a meeting sometime soon. I saw it on my calendar. Yeah, this week or next week on a
Next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
I know that she does have an event. Recreation is going to be utilizing the community center through the fall and winter for more stuff now that it's open. So she does have an event this Saturday from 2 to 4 for tie dye and bingo and switch games there, too.
And then the Halloween party will be October 25, the Halloween party, 4 to 6 with the community center.
She doesn't have it on here.
Yeah, so we're going to have a, don't forget, we're having a costume contest. Bring your best costume. October 25 from 4 to 6.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Rick? Okay. Last, administrative reports. We have the community center, and we have a report there.
I have an update I'd like to
Sure.
We had a meeting today, and we reviewed, there's been a request on a change for bingo as far as going to, instead of like manual prizes, to start charging per cards and then have the payout with the cash payout. And we went over it. We viewed it in detail, and we did take a vote on it, all of the members of the committee. And at this time, we're not going to change to the cash feature. We'll give it a couple more months and then review it in the future and leave it as it is currently.
I'm going to have some very disappointed people. Going to have some very disappointed ladies.
Do you, do, does she need any donations for prizes or any things like that? I mean, I will donate some stuff if you
Yes.
I ran out of stuff in my house.
We did, we did talk I'll get to it this weekend. Okay, we did talk about that and even thought with the community kind of maybe promoting the community center and what we offer and things like that is perhaps going to create a flyer and going to businesses and, you know, let them know about the community center. And if they'd like to donate anything from their business, that way it's kind of a advertisement for them. And then also gifts that we could, or prizes that we could put on our table. So we may consider that in the future, but right, we're going to leave it as the gifts right now.
If you'd like to donate anything.
I will get, I will get on that this week.
New and unused items only, please. New and unused only.
Why'd you say used? Mine were new.
Unused, unused.
Oh, yeah.
Yours wasn't used. Yours were hanging.
Okay, I'm, you got to go on. I don't know what that meant, and I don't want to know what it meant.
We're hanging on the wall.
Oh, okay, come on.
I liked them.
Yeah.
Oh, everybody liked them. It was UK. Yeah. So bring some more UK back. That women love the UK.
Okay.
They do.
Okay.
Ohio's women.
Yes. Okay, any other questions? I need a motion to accept the administrative reports.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Okay. Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. I'll make my report brief because I can't hardly talk. I think I got Maria's, whatever Maria had a couple months ago. But we did, you all wanted us to talk about the, with the lady about the mural. We did, we did a Zoom meeting, Chris, myself, and Katie with Peyton, got some answers to some questions, especially Andrew. It was all included.
Okay.
And she goes, well, yeah, it's all included. And we go, that's not what you're saying. But anyway, long story short, and I'll make it real short. We'll talk about it at caucus because there's been a little, I don't know, who, speed bump? There's, yeah. There's, yeah, the development on the mural, not from her. It was after we talked to her and we had to do some things. And we'll, we'll talk about it at the caucus.
Okay, we'll make sure that gets on the.
Yes.
Agenda for the caucus.
The only other thing, I've been up there, and I'm not sure if council has, the sanctuary at Edwards, the 55 and over complex up there, they have two buildings up there. If you've been up there, I was up there, I think, Friday. It looks like they're ready to move in. Found out yesterday from Chris that I don't think they want to move, the guy who's moving them in or renting them or whatever, they want to make sure that Edwards is, the street's in pretty good shape. So they started concrete work yesterday. Was it on Edwards or the day before?
They started, yeah. The contractor started.
Yeah.
There's a garage, there's a ground for the city, that part of our current, for the day, the name, the road. Yeah. The name, so then, three places, two, even, like, their most.
But anyway, that's going on right now, so what, a couple, a week or so?
They reported on the 5:15, which is industrial area, to inherit from the area. So, they will finish planning, once this is out of here, will be completed.
So in a couple of weeks, I think it's ready to go. And the place up there, it looks like it's ready to go. There's, you see very few contractors in the parking lot and they've done a wonderful job. It's beautiful, the two buildings up there. So, I don't know, probably.
They told me the end of the month, they're hoping to move in the first building.
Did they mention anything about a ribbon cutting or whatever?
They did not, but I do have some numbers I can call.
No, I mean, we'll, we'll wait for them, but I know they have ribbon cutting over here, so. But anyway, if you get a chance, go up there, well, in a couple of weeks, go up there and you'll see it. They did a beautiful job up there. Back at the industrial park, they continue Chick-fil-A. They've really done a lot there. I don't know about the inside. I haven't been in the inside. I'm afraid to go in the inside because you got so many people there, you might get yelled at. So, and Niagara, they're, they're now painting the outside of theirs, so you go up there and I mean, it is, there's everything going on up there. The bridge that will go over the spur coming off the railroad, me and Chris went up there, I think, a week ago and looked at that and they were, you could see how that's going to work and they're building up the sides and so forth. So, and they've already got it dug out for the spur, so they're, I would say Chick-fil-A's pretty well on time. They want to get done by January and they may be close to that. So that'll be fun. That's about it. A couple of things I think the chief mentioned and Katie mentioned, I won't repeat them. So maybe I put you guys low. I'll jump in front of you guys, see if I can get some stuff in, but. Okay, does anybody have any questions? Okay, we're going down to the general items. First, we have municipal order 18-2025. This is approving surplus property for disposal. Katie.
Yes, municipal order 18-2025, a municipal order declaring certain items as surplus property, authorizing the city to dispose of the property pursuant to KRS 82.083. Whereas the city staff has determined that the equipment described and attached here too is no longer necessary for the use by the city. And whereas these items were originally used by the city for official purposes, including office work, police matters and public works. And whereas such equipment can be disposed to create storage space for other items, now therefore be it ordered by the city council of the city of Ellesmere, Kentucky. Section one, that the city council of Ellesmere, Kentucky finds that the items attached here too as exhibit A to be surplus and no longer needed for official city purposes and therefore pursuant to KRS 82.083, the city council finds it is in the best interest to dispose of this property, an inventory to save maintenance costs and create storage space for the items no longer necessary. Section two, that this order shall take effect and be in full force when passed and indexed according to law. Just a quick note, all of this is old computer towers that have been sitting around, some of them accumulating since after the move. There's a few from the police department and ours that have to be wiped accordingly to destroy, but they're all labeled out here and we'll follow that once this is approved.
I'll make a motion then we accept municipal order number 18-2025. Second.
Okay, motion for, we have second. Any questions, discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have a municipal order 19-2025. This is approving surplus property for public auction. Katie.
Yes, municipal order 19-2025, a municipal order declaring certain items as surplus property and authorizing the city to dispose of said property by sale of public auction pursuant to KRS 45A 425 and KRS 82083. Whereas the city owns certain real and personal property that is no longer necessary, suitable or beneficial for public use. And whereas pursuant to KRS 82083, the city is authorized to dispose of such property by public auction, now therefore be it ordered by the city council of the city of Ellesmere, Kentucky, that section one, the city council finds that these items attached as exhibit A here too to be surplus and no longer necessary for city purposes and therefore pursuant to KRS 82083, the Ellesmere city council finds it is in the best interest of the city to dispose or destroy the surplus property and inventory to save maintenance costs and storage as these items no longer needed for public use and has become unsuitable for the intended purpose. It's in the best interest of the public to reduce the cost and maintenance of this equipment and the property be sold by public auction. Section three, in the event that no bids are received, the surplus property at public auction, such property may be disposed of in a manner deemed appropriate. Section three, the proceeds of the sale of the property will be deposited in the city's general fund. Section four, that this order shall be in effect in full force when passed and indexed according to law. The items attached in this list are when we upgraded our phone system, these are just old phones that we're going to try and sell as a lot if possible. And that's it. If we don't sell, then we'll just dispose of them after that time.
I'll make a motion then we accept municipal order number 19-2025. Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have four second readings of ordinances, so we will be voting on all four. First one is, under there is the second reading, 1848. This is amending the citywide loan program. Mr. Voss.
An ordinance amending the policy for the citywide loan program now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Ellesmere, Kentucky as follows. Section one, that individual Ellesmere residents may borrow sums of money for necessary repairs in an aggregate amount of $15,000, replacing the $10,000 that was already in place, to be repaid in monthly installments at an interest rate not to exceed 3%. Amortized to be repaid in no more than six years. Any and all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance shall be and are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage, approval and publication. This ordinance may be published in summary form, as the mayor said, it is the second
Do we have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I second the motion.
Any questions, comments? If not, Katie, to the roll call.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Wade.
Yes.
Councilwoman vote.
Yes.
Councilwoman Barnett Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Grubbs.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tester.
Yes.
Councilman Myatt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have second reading of ordinance 1849. This is repealing chapter 11 for the alcoholic beverage control. Mr. Voss.
Whereas the city of Ellesmere, Kentucky wishes to repeal in its entirety, chapter 111, alcoholic beverages and code enforcement, or code of ordinance for the city of Ellesmere, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Ellesmere, Kentucky as follows. Section one, that the city hereby repeals chapter 111, alcoholic beverages as created by ordinance 1297, 1988, and amended by the following ordinances, 1489, 2001, 1525, 2004, 1553, 2005, 1612, 2010, 1655, 2013, 1670, 2013, 1677, 2014, and 1743, 2017. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase or portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or aren't constituted by any court of competent jurisdiction, such portion shall be deemed a separate, distinct and independent provision, and such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions hereof. All ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith are to that extent of such conflict repealed. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and approval. This is the second reading.
I'll make a motion for approval of ordinance 1849, this 2025.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, Katie.
Roll call?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to work you today.
Going to change it up this time.
Okay.
Mr. Myatt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tester.
Yes.
Councilwoman Grubbs.
Yes.
Councilwoman Barnett Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman vote.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wade.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion carries. Next, we have second reading of ordinance, ordinance 1850. This is creating chapter 111A, alcoholic beverage control.
An ordinance to the city of Ellesmere, Kentucky, creating chapter 111A, found herein the following set of regulations and requirements for alcohol beverage control herein after to be known as the City of Ellesmere Alcoholic Beverage Control Ordinance, Chapter 111A, and further adopting all applicable and required KRS, including but not limited to KRS chapters 241 through 244, as recently updated by the General Assembly and administrative ag, agencies, sorry about that, now therefore be it ordained by the city of Ellesmere, Kentucky, that the following regulations and requirements are hereby adopted and set forth. 111A10, this ordinance should be known as the Alcoholic Beverage Control Ordinance. The purpose of the ordinance is to establish uniform regulations. The 111A20 sets forth the fees for this 19-type licenses. Lays out how they're paid, if there's any refunds, disposition of how the fees are taken care of. The 111A30 creates the Office of Alcohol Beverage Control Administrator. The mayor of the city appoints the city clerk to be employee of the city of Ellesmere to serve in that capacity. Application to maintenance records is 11140, sets forth how it's advertised, the form of the application and other conditions. Section D sets forth the reasons for denial of licenses, and that is causes or for refusal, an issue for suspension or revocation of license if the applicant has done an act for which a revocation of license would be authorized by local, state and federal law. If the applicant has made false material statements in the application, the applicant who's refused a license may appeal the refusal to the state board pursuant to section K. E, the form of the license. F, what needs to be done if there's a change in information and has to be filed with the administrator within 10 days. Following information is required considering the new manager, the name, address, interest, date of birth, date of residence, whether or not he has an interest in it, stock. Renewal of license every year except in the case of temporary license. Each license shall be renewed. All renewal licenses must be on file with the city ABC administrator no less than 30 days prior to an expiration of a license for the preceding license period. H, how to handle a loss or destroyed license, a $10 replacement fee. Revocation or suspension of a license may be revoked or suspended by the ABC administrator. If the licensee shall violate any other provisions of KRS chapters 20, or 241, 244. A license may be revoked for any reason for which the city ABC administrator would have required to refuse a license if facts have been known in addition to foregoing. A license may be revoked or suspended for conviction of licensee or licensee's agents for selling any illegal alcoholic beverage on the premises, making any false material statements in their application or renewal. Conviction of the licensee of license agent servants, two violations of terms or any act relating to manufacture, sell, transportation of alcoholic beverages in two consecutive years. Two misdemeanors, directly or indirectly attributable to the use of alcoholic beverages in two consecutive years, or any felony. Failure to default of a license to pay an excise tax or any part of the tax or penalties imposed. Revocation of any state license. Setting up, conducting or keeping gaming license, gambling machines, things of that nature. Conviction of the licensee, the license key's agent servants, trafficking or possession upon the license premises of a controlled illegal substance, knowingly permitting trafficking or possession by patrons using the facilities, knowingly receiving stolen property upon the license premises. Failure to comply with the terms of the ABC administrator. Proceedings for revocation upon a verified complaint of any person or initiative of any law enforcement officer, the city ABC administrator may institute proceedings to revoke. Specific proceedings to be followed, the hearings on actions for revocation and suspension shall provide constitutional due process. If this decision by the ABC administrator revoking or suspended may be appealed to the board. Within three days after an order of revocation of a license becoming final, notice of revocation shall be given to the licensee and to the owner of the license premises. Appeals, appeals from the order of the ABC shall be taken to the ABC board by following notice of appeal within 30 days of decision. As provided by law, no appeal, city ABC administrator order, decision or resulting state board order shall become effective or final until all board appeals, court appeals or appeal times shall have exhausted. No license issued under this term may be transferred or signed either as to the licensee or location except with prior approval of the ABC administrator and not then until they pay $100. Review of license applicants to whom a license is issued pursuant to, shall provide periodic information demonstrating compliance with the conditions of the license. Dormancy, if it is necessary to license actually conduct a business authorized by such license, or else the license shall be dormant and become null and void after 90 days. Any license under which no business is transactioned during a period of 90 days shall be deemed inactive unless the condition set forth in C below or provided, or proved to the satisfaction of the administrator, license shall be surrendered to the ABC administrator. If the license is not voluntarily surrendered, it shall be revoked. Hours of sale, no distilled spirits, wine, malt may be sold whether by drink or package in the city between the hours of 2:30 a.m. and 6 a.m., except Sunday on Sundays. No distilled spirits may be sold between the hours of 2:30 a.m. and 10 a.m. During restricted hours, no person who has a valid city license for the sale of distilled spirits or wine or malt beverages at a real sale shall cause, permit or engage in any of the actions, businesses, transactions authorized by the permit. If a separate department of such license premises is maintained in a manner previously approved in writing by the alcohol control administrator as being capable of being locked, closed off and separated from the remainder and all fixtures and apparatus connected with the acts of the business and transaction. with the acts of the business and transaction authorized by the stated license, such premises are located within such approved department, and such approved department is continuously kept locked. All retail sellers that hold a valid license are hereby authorized to sell distilled spirits, wine, and malt beverages whether by drink or package according to the terms of your individual license during the hours of 6 a.m. and 2:30, and again, Sunday, until 10. No gambling or game of chance unless otherwise authorized by the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Prevention of disorderly premises, they have to be secure. Prizes and premiums are prohibited. It shall be unlawful for the licensee under this ordinance to give away or any alcohol beverage to a consumer in any quantity for free or less than the paid for the current wholesale price unless the licensee holds a sampling license. Intoxicated person, drunkenness, the licensee shall not sell, give, or deliver alcoholic beverages to any person who appears to be reasonably, actually, or apparently under the influence of alcoholic beverages, controlled substances. Underage sales, licensee shall not sell, give, or deliver any alcoholic beverages to anyone under 21. Sign requirements, notice for people under 21 that are not allowed. License to be displayed at all times. Legal transactions for wholesalers, no wholesaler or distributor shall sell any alcoholic beverages to any person in the city for any consideration except under cash terms, the wholesaler or distributor at the time before the delivery. A wholesaler is also permitted to extend credit for 30 days. Employment restrictions, no licensee shall employ anyone who has been convicted of a felony within the last two years, has been twice convicted of misdemeanor or offense directly or indirectly attributable to the use of intoxicated liquors within two years, is under the age of 20. Within two years prior to the date of his employment, has had any city license under this chapter revoked. Labatory facilities are required. Nudity and adult entertainment activities are restricted, other than as permitted businesses allowed by Chapter 120, sexually oriented business specifically as set forth in subsection 12005. No license shall offer or permit nudity, adult entertainment activities, including nude or nearly nude dancing, adult motion pictures, television, things of that nature. Cause for revocation, violations of this or any other articles, just the licensee to penalties provided in this ordinance, and shall cause for revocation or suspension. Minors, except as specifically authorized under KRS Chapter 241 to 244, no person under the age of 21 may possess alcoholic beverages or enter onto the license premises for the purpose of acquiring. Consumption premises, consumption at packaged stores prohibited. Mandatory responsible beverage control training for all persons employed. Signs and advertising, all signs shall be in compliance with any and all existing rules, regulations, and ordinances of the city. Any advertising of any licensee under this chapter shall be in compliance with KRS 244130. Shall be unlawful for licensee under this chapter, distributor caused to be distributing any handbill, circulars, or cards as a medium of advertising alcoholic beverages. No licensee shall advertise alcoholic beverages on any municipally owned property. Enforcement, city police officers, and the City ABC Administrator and his or her investigators are hereby authorized to enforce the ordinance in full. 111A-95, information of changes in the ordinance, City Council may promulgate rules and regulations or amendments thereto, as in its discretion in order to ensure the proper implementation of this ordinance. Such will be done in accordance with local, state, and federal law. Severability, if any portion of this is declared illegal or unconstitutional, all other portions will remain in effect. The penalties are set forth in 111A-99. First offense is a misdemeanor, subject to prosecution in the Canton County Court System. First offense, $100, no more than 200, no more nor more than 500, or in prison for not more than six months. Penalties provided for in this section shall be in addition to the revocation and suspension. And that is your second reading. For, is it?
Take a drink.
I make a motion for approval of ordinance 1850, 2025.
Second.
I just wanted to thank the clerk, though, for going back on page 14 under M nudity, clarifying that with the how we have the designated areas of the county.
There you go. Yep.
And said, thank you for that.
That's why I was making Greg work hard.
Yeah.
Right. Every day, it's something else.
I'm telling you.
It is.
You gotta get it right.
We're gonna hook it up. Okay.
Ready?
In all the excitement, did we have a motion in a second?
We had to second.
Now we have discussion? Okay. Katie?
Yes.
Roll call.
Councilman Wade?
Yes.
Councilwoman vote?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Grubbs?
Yes.
Councilman Tester?
Yes.
Councilman Myatt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Coach Greg did such a great job with that last one. We'll let him do the second reading of 1851, amending the Code of Ethics, Chapter 39. Whereas the City Council of the City of Ellesmere, Kentucky amends Chapter 39 to include subsection 39.118, meeting attendance under standards of contact, of conduct, excuse me, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Ellesmere, Kentucky, that the following regulations or requirements are hereby adopted. Everything remains the same except standards of conduct, 39.18, meeting attendance is set forth. And I will read that when I can get to it. That is set forth. A, all elected officials are expected to attend their meetings. B, in the event that more than one-third of the caucus meetings, council meetings, and special meetings are missed, the member may provide written documentation that justifies the absences prior to removal being initiated. C, the removal process may be initiated by council members if necessary. That is the only change to the.
I'll make a motion. We accept ordinance number 1851-2025. Second.
Okay. Any questions? Discussion?
Nope.
If not.
Take a vote, Katie.
Got it. Councilman Grubbs?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman vote?
Yes.
Councilman Wade?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tester?
Yes.
Councilman Myatt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Takes care of all the general lines. Now, we're down to council reports. We'll start with Joanne.
Uh, Joanne, me first. I only have two things that I just don't believe it was done right, and I want to voice my opinion on it. The bingo thing came up with, from the elderly ladies of Ellesmere, they wanted to pay for the cards. No big deal. All the other towns are doing it, so they want to bring some of their friends from the other towns to do it here, because they go over to the other towns to see them. I do understand that the community, the committee did this and they voted. Okay. That report should have been turned into the council so the council can vote on it before it was made a decision. That's all I have to say about it. It's, you already done it, but it should have came to us first with what you all approved or not approved, and then gave us the right to listen and get more feedback. That's the only thing I said about that. The community center is taken off, but there's one thing that the community people have a voice very loudly. The community center is not for the citizens anymore. It has been taken over to make money for the downstairs. They're told that downstairs is strictly for making money, and you get the upstairs. So, the community, the people that have come to me, they're very upset about this. It seems like you guys are taking, you make it in the community center, but you took the seniors out of it. It seems like they don't have no voice, and I can understand you want to make money. That's, all the cities want to make money, but we are a small city and stuff, and our people mean more to me than the money. And there's always a way to raise money to do something in a city. You have grants, you have local businesses. Don't take it away from your community. Your seniors and the people that really like that community center, they were there before you came, because some of these, some of you all, you know, you never came before. I've been going there forever. I never seen a lot of you until it got fixed, and it was gonna be fixed. That's the only time I've seen you. So, you, you came in at the last of it, you're seeing it with the money, it's taken to raise it and stuff, but you wasn't there when it was just the ladies at the community center, the people that used to come, the historical society. We were there when nobody else was coming. But now it seems like you want to take us away to make more money and make what you all want to do with a community center, and we just asked for 50 cents for a bingo card. That was really such a big deal, 50 cents for a bingo card? But we could spend $100,000 on signs and, you know, things to put all over the city, but a 50-cent bingo card doesn't have no weight. That's all I have to say.
Joanne? I can respond a little bit. I'm not on that committee.
Yeah.
But at the caucus meeting, I did refer back to that committee, because that's the proper chain of command.
And they should have reported back to us.
And, and she did. She reported back to us.
But she didn't give us no report where we could have a feedback or anything. We don't know, like, was it, you know, one, two, you know, how many people in that committee, how many voted for it or against, that we can say, hey, what would it take for you to vote for it? What can we do different? She didn't give us the opportunity. They just said, no bingo cards. I don't like that. I like for everybody to have an input.
Give a little bit more information.
I don't care if it ends up not having it, but we still, the council should have voted on it.
Joanne, we did discuss it in detail.
Okay. But we didn't get no report.
Let me finish, please. All factors were considered. We went over a lot of things, the people who come, what it would, advantage it would be if we did go to the money, and what advantage it would be if we kept it currently as it was. But I did specify that we will revisit it in the future, that maybe perhaps for the rest of the year or a couple more months, we're going to leave it as is. As far as putting it before council, it's a community center. They, there is a committee.
Right. The committee answers to the city.
We meet each week.
But you guys still got answer to the city.
I am, and it was this, and I brought it up and let the city, all of council, know the decision that was currently made. We will review it again in a couple months, take your input there, and we look, the community center is for everyone. And as far as where your meetings are, the access to the upper part, they have easy access to go, to come in, the doors there, I don't quite understand.
I'm not saying anything about the access. I'm saying that the people that used to be there, that kept it open before, you guys are like pushing them away. They're asking for a 50-cent bingo card, so we can spend so much money on a sign to come into the city? We can spend that much money on a sign, but not 50 cents on a bingo card to make the elderly happy? Okay. That, that's what I mean.
We reviewed it. It was the decision that was made, but we also said we'll definitely revisit it again in a couple of months.
I think it's time for us to quit putting all the jobs on Katie and everybody else in the city, on their, the staff at the office, and get a city administrator that can stand up to things and put them right back again the way they were. So, just hire a city administrator and quit passing the buck to the girls in the office.
Is anybody eligible to speak on that? Like I said, the only comment I had was that at the caucus meeting, it was brought up, and I just went by the chain of command, the way you're supposed to. There's a committee that oversees a certain area, they'll come back and say, that's what we'd recommend, and on most cases, that's what you go with.
Yeah, I mean, but I mean, we didn't even get a report from them. It's like, okay, they're, they're the communities that are, it belongs to the city. They're not all by themselves.
Do you all keep minutes when you do your meeting?
We do, and they're not approved until after the next meeting, since our minute, our meeting was today. I can go into a little bit of that, Joanne.
Could you, could you have the minutes for me for the next caucus meeting? If you don't mind, and that way we can see.
Discuss it, see what's in there.
Will they have their meeting before that?
I'm talking about the minutes from this meeting.
We had a meeting today.
Yeah, they had a meeting today.
Yeah, but they don't, you don't approve it until the next.
Yeah, at our next meeting, there's no meeting in October, not until November.
Well, just another month, another month. Could we just have some information on how vote went?
It was unanimous.
It was unanimous.
It was unanimous. Teresa reported that bingo attendance is up. Every week, they have community people participating in it. They have a lot of feedback that they like the prizes. She is going to conduct some research and do a survey and find out, not just bingo, but what other things people are interested in. She is trying to try some new programs and adjust what works and what doesn't as she goes through this. But, but for now, she has already planned out her calendars through most of the end of the year, so wants to kind of just keep what's going and working for now. But for the bingo cards, Joanne, when you were going and it was just a few people, the turnout now is exploding, and we're not the only city that does prizes. We're not the only community center that no longer does 50-cent cards for buy-in. So, that's not accurate information. There are other community centers that do prizes too for bingo.
Well, like I said, something else that wasn't awkward, the last time we were at the community center, Teresa says she was for it, right in front of everybody else. So, she changed her mind at the meeting. So, see what I'm saying? Things happen, not even knew about it.
I got a quick question on that one. You said they were pushing the bingo out. The bingo still has its same slot.
Yeah, it's still the same.
So, when it gets rented out, that spot's already taken, so it can't be rented when bingo was going on, correct?
Rental's upstairs, bingo's is upstairs.
But it's not like we're pushing bingo out for rentals.
No.
They're separate, so.
They're separate.
So, it's, okay.
Yeah.
Are you done? Yeah. Okay. Clarify about us spending money, and it's not on our citizens. Every rental, unless somebody could tell me different, every rental that we've had down there since we've renovated it, has all been citizens, and the citizens who rent it pay $200, they get $100 back, and I'm telling you, the city does not make money off of $100 when somebody spends five hours down there having a party. Now, as far as the upstairs, the upstairs is for the seniors, and we bought stuff for the seniors, that's, that's been the whole thing. And one of the biggest problems with the, with the senior program is attendance. I remember back when I was on council, and you remember, when Jerry was there, there used to be, that place was packed. That was, and then she went to Florence, I don't know if she took her crowd with her or whatever, and ever since then, I've been down there playing bingo a couple years ago, and there's five people playing bingo. So, you know, when you, when you sit there, and I don't know what you're saying about Katie taking on responsibilities and so forth.
She's doing a lot for the city. It's like.
She does a lot for the city, so does that guy, so does that guy, so does this guy. And I, and I spend quite a few minutes up here during the day, too, and I don't see where all of a sudden, because we're not, according to you, we're not using the senior center correctly, we need a city administrator. Because if city administrators underneath me.
Every time we, every time we read something, Katie's in charge of it. Every time. Every time...
That's because she's the clerk.
Katie, Katie, Katie. Katie's got a lot of stuff already on her plate.
Katie got a problem?
No, sir.
With your job?
No.
Well, when she comes to me and tells me she has a problem, she's got too much work, then that's when we'll go, I'll take care of that. But right now, she hasn't come and complained. Chief, you got a problem?
Yes, sir.
You got a problem? You got a problem?
Yes, sir.
Well, you know, until somebody comes to me, and I, you know what? There's a lot of things that you don't know with city administrators and what has gone on here a year ago or two years ago or whatever, a lot of things that we don't publish to the thing. But right now, I tell you what, you got to get the right person in here, and you get the wrong person in here, and you may have staff leaving. And those are the things that I have to consider when I hire a city administrator. Believe me, I don't like coming up here six hours a day making $400 a month.
Yeah.
And, and you know, I tell you what, and I tell these guys all the time, Katie probably does more than she should, he does more than he should, he does more, but they don't complain because they like the way the city is being run right now. I think the chief likes his job. They might say it later, he doesn't, but I think chief likes what's going on, Chris...
He loves his job.
And I've told him how much I appreciate how they have helped me out. You know, the other day, a prime example is with the mural. We have a Zoom meeting. Who's in there? Katie and Chris, with me. When we have a Christmas party meeting, who's in there? The chief, Chris, Katie, Lauren. We don't invite Greg because he's Bah Humbug, but anyway. So, I mean, they've all stepped up and, you know, and I have to my own counsel say we need a city administrator. He has not told me we need a city administrator right now. He has not told me that. She has not told me that, and Lauren's not told me that. So I, this thing, you know, and then it all comes back to bingo game playing for money. And like I said, we get our money for the senior services through the Kitten County and the Ed District. And what was the advice of the Ed District? Get an advisory committee to run it. So we did that. So what do you do? Get the advisory committee, and they have no say-so? I mean, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. You basically neglect the advisory committee if you all are making the decision.
No, we just want to know why, the way it was made the decision.
Well, and I mean, you have a council person on there. Katie, I don't even want her on there, and she gets on there.
And there's two seniors.
Yeah, there's two seniors who come to everything.
It was, you said that we voted on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. He doesn't come to bingo.
No, he doesn't.
Yeah, he's on the committee.
Yeah.
So he was part of the vote.
He doesn't even play bingo.
It doesn't matter, Joanne, you're missing the point.
I know, you're making the point.
And I'll just finish up, and I know I'm repeating myself, but we do not make money off that community center downstairs renting it out. $100 to rent that thing out for our citizens who are renting it out. In fact, we got people that, I probably shouldn't say it's on air, but they're citizens who are signing for other people. So, you know, and you all decide on the price, and I'm fine with that price.
And I think that that says a lot about the council, because I was probably one that said it should be low for the community, for those that are renting it. So I'm well pleased with the community center. It is for the seniors, it's for the community. I think the facility looks wonder, wonderful. They've got new programs in there. When it comes to the bingo, to me, bingo shouldn't even really be about money, it's about socializing with your friends, having a good time, laughing, having some snacks, having a Coke, you know, and laughing. And I'm more than glad to donate some gifts for prizes, but I'm real pleased with it, and, you know, I think we're wise to have somebody overseeing that and having a committee that oversees that.
Yeah, I got her in contact with the line dancing, and we got it. So we tried it out for one time, and if we get more people in and stuff, we'll get to keep it.
Yeah.
We do.
So, anyway...
You're next.
I'm next?
Yeah. Because your mic's hot.
I really don't have anything other than, you know, I'm dismayed, because I'm very happy with Teresa and the job that she's doing down there. And by all means, I am very pleased with how our whole city is operating. We have a great facility now, we have a great police chief. Chris, we've had more compliments in the past four or five years about how well our streets are taken care of and maintained in the winter. The attorney, well, what...
But that's a major incident. She told me when I first met her, I hate Lauren.
Yeah, she did.
And Mayor, he honestly does spend a lot, a lot of his time at the city. So I'm pleased with the way things are going, and that's just a little minor bump. And like I said, give the committee that's overseeing the community, give them a chance. They'll revisit it in, what, five or six months and see what they say then. And then once revisited, and we'll, we can get copies of the minutes if that's what makes you feel more comfortable, and that's the way I would deal with it.
Yep. Sound good to me.
And that's all I have in there.
Yeah, okay. I think my report's over, but we do have stuff upstairs that we haven't finished up. We have two computer tables up there that we have. We got to get the computers for them, so if seniors want to come up and get on the computer and so forth. So it's kind of baby steps, because we just wiped it out and started from new. And like I said, Teresa's doing a great job, and my only thing, my, I guess, statement to her was, we just got to get people in there. We got to get it back to where it was years ago.
Well, some of the activities they're having, I want to come to more, but in the summer, I don't do a lot of the activities. But now that it's going to be winter and fall, people be, I hope, going more, since they're not going to be outside, so...
Sure.
I'm done. I don't have anything.
Maria?
Well, I was just going to say about the community center and all of the new things that they're coming up with, just as we reply, and to the maintenance team for any time there's an issue or, you know, you're in there right away getting it fixed and everything. And I just think it's a great facility for all of our residents.
You going to say anything?
Andrew?
My turn. Yeah. I was at the reopening of the community center. It was beautiful, loved it. On that note, I do, as the, I guess, the youngest one on council, I do like the renaming of the community center. I'd love to see some more activities for the younger crowd, and I've heard from a few people, but getting some younger crowd in there, activities for them, I think, would kind of help get more people involved. When it was the senior center, it kind of seemed like it was only for that group. Now that it's a community center, getting more activities for younger people in there probably will help draw a little bit more of a crowd. But it was beautiful. Whoever took care of it, Chris, I know you did quite a bit, great job. Second, schools are back in. Have been for a little while. I take the little ones to school every day. Just a quick reminder to slow down. You guys leave five minutes early, please do. There are kids that walk all over the city, so just take an extra five minutes, slow down a little bit. These kids are probably not paying as much of attention as they probably should, so it is our job to make sure that everyone gets there safely. And last but not least, chief, appreciate you guys keeping us safe out there. We had that major incident in Walton, and you guys are what keep us safe, and I want to thank you for that. That's all I got.
Wait a minute, I got one more thing. You were talking about bringing the kids in and that. Last year, we actually had our Halloween party here. This year, it will be down to the community center.
And that's the 25th, October.
Yes. There's tie dye this weekend, too, if you want to take the kids. Tie dye games, the switch.
And bingo.
All right.
This weekend.
More bingo.
I guess I'm up. I'm actually not going to follow suit and talk about the community center, so change gears a little bit. So I had the OKI meeting, the Special Commonwealth meeting, where KYTC assigns extra points to any projects we have over the next six years. Chris, unfortunately, we were still kind of at the bottom with ours. We didn't get any additional points assigned, but there were a few projects that got moved up that will alleviate some of the traffic on Dixie Highway going through Ellesmere. So that'll help us out, not directly, but indirectly. The second thing is that, as I remember as a member of city council, that if I don't ask questions and I don't start a discussion, then I've surely failed as an elected official. So I appreciate all the comments. That's it.
I make a motion we adjourned. Second.
Third.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. By three.
Anybody ever poses an adjournment? I will.
Close it, Warren. I've always thought about this. I'm too close to it. I'm too close to it, but I...
Tom, we got a... No, we got Tom.